These are the opening and closing of the.
So I'm ready to go.
You are all set to go.
All right, this is the time of day, it's only for the fields, regular meeting, public hearing. It's scheduled for Tuesday, May 30th at seven fifteen. Held at the Old Town Hall of one 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 Somerset Ave, like Mass zero two seven one five. So this Zoom meeting information, do you have your list correctly?
Yes.
I gotta read all of this?
No, just the meeting ID and the password.
All right, meeting ID number seven four four six four six two eight one five. Password is six five one three four two, phone number is three oh five two two four nineteen sixty eight. Revised agenda, open meeting posted on eight twenty three two thousand twenty three, call meeting to order, we all stand. What the United States of America, in truth, the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law. Okay, so we're gonna confirm our next annual meeting, June twenty seventh two thousand twenty three, I believe it's gonna be held at the same place, Old Town Hall. Do I have a second?
Second, Susan Fitzgerald.
Everybody all set, everybody good?
I cannot make that.
Cannot make that.
At least Spencer cannot make that meeting.
So Zach, we have, at least we'll not be able to make that meeting on June twenty seventh two thousand twenty three, are you a voting member or would be anyone on that meeting at this point?
I can put Susan's back today. Same with. Yes, are you on high? That was substitute on, right, but maybe so, I don't think she ended up because there was no need to assign the document once, because it was just. So it was just sad and. It's not here on people, like, did you do the long? He's, he did watch the meeting.
It was.
So. No, right now, at least you're not, but.
All right, sure, I believe we just see all the meeting. So are you buddies in favor for the next meeting of June twenty seventh two thousand twenty three, except for at least Spencer?
Yes.
Yes, and I will be joining by zoom.
Greg Logan, yes.
Susan Fitzgerald, yes.
Jonathan Gale, yes.
David Phillips, yes.
Yeah, so we have June twenty seventh at seven fifteen.
We have Zach.
I just couldn't hear, I, I just couldn't hear if, if we're given the same day or not, sorry.
June twenty seventh two thousand twenty three.
Okay, then I, Zachary Karen.
Next order of business is public hearing, special permit, Jackwood, Mahata, six thirteen Park Street, map four, lot one seventy seven.
Uh, yes, so I think the concerns we had was for, uh, who does parking, actually, we're going to. Uh, I think it was parking, um, and then just, um, there were some exits that were concerned, we just couldn't pick it up off of the, the diagram, um, drawings. Uh, so the fire chief and building commissioner James both went out and had a site visit. Um, so I had to explain, so the pool area now will be converted to a playground area, so that one. Uh, of concern for the children, um, and also, um, the exit out to the pool area will no longer be a concern because it won't be a, a pool area. Um, and it'll just be the playground. Um, we had, what else did we have? Oh, we had exits, um, the, oh, the driveway, um, it is a shared driveway, um, and they had concerns, or there was concerns maybe that came up about, uh, parking, but. That was okay, um, they don't see anything, uh, wrong with parking or, uh, entrance, you know, coming into the, to the property. Um, the fire chief did state, uh, um, coming in with the fire truck would be a problem, he would just pull into the shared driveway, um, and he has ample space if he had to come in for the thing. What else? Um, I think that was it, I think it was just parking and the shared driveway, um, the exits out of the actual preschool and the pool area, we addressed all of those. Um, and they were on board, they think everything will be okay. That ended the questions.
So there was some things in, uh, reports that were put in from the fire chief and Jim Agar stating exactly what we stated. Um, there, and we don't have to read those, those aren't actually letters, those were just emails, correct?
Uh, typically, we read them into record.
Zach.
So in your packet, it's stapled.
All right. So we got a letter here from Christopher McGee, the fire chief. Uh, I am in total agreement with the building commissioner from my comments, and it was a very productive meeting, Jim Agar. Um, sent this on May twenty fourth, they were both dated the same day, good afternoon. Yes, the fire chief and I did visit the location, met with the property owners, our discussion was comprehensive and was very detailed, the owner of the property. Have agreed to abandon the existing pool as part of the project and will be sure that the building permit includes the removal of the existing pool, thank you and sorry for the delay.
Um, I, I just wanna say one thing, I, I, I hope this comes up, uh, positive, and I don't want this to sound any kind of like, you know. I'm, I'm, as the chairman of the board, I really, uh, commend the applicant for their due diligence and them being on top of things, being prepared. And having all this ready to go, people that don't have an attorney with them, don't have an engineer with them, the fact that. They follow through on everything and we have correspondence, there was no excuses, there was no, we didn't get an answer from them, I just, it's really refreshing to see an applicant, especially if that has no representation. Be as prepared as you guys have been, so this has been great, thank you.
Awesome, thanks for saying that, Zach, appreciate it. Still a long way to go.
So Zach, at this moment, what would you, what would you, uh, like to do?
I mean, I have heard everything that I need to, uh, that I, that I need to hear, so I guess, uh, if there are no more questions, then no more input needed, we would just have to close the. Um, there, there would need to be a motion to close the public hearing aspect of this, meaning we can still deliberate, they can still be here for it. But we just can't take any more questions or information, and then we would have to vote if we are ready to do so. So if we feel like, you know, there's no more questions or no more information that we need, uh, someone can make that motion whenever they're ready, and then we can discuss.
The only, well, before we do that, should any of the board members have a right to talk? Any concerns?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I, well, the board members can still talk after public hearing is closed, they just wouldn't be able to ask the applicant a question because the applicant wouldn't be able to speak because we closed the public in before, uh, the public hearing portion. So if any of the non-voting members have anything to ask the applicant, they should do that before we close the public hearing part.
That's what I was, do you have any?
The only question I have, but this is Jonathan's act, and the only question I have for the applicant. Um, you heard me on the telephone last time, and I'm also asking this question as the ADA coordinator for the town, which is. Whether or not the question is to where your handicap spot and signage is going to go. I don't see that anywhere in the letters.
Yeah, so, um, they didn't bring that up, uh, during the site visit, um, but I can, and we have ample space to designate the space for that. Um, you know, we're, you know, we can make that a priority, um, for the parking that we do have available on site. Um, and I do remember you have mentioned, um, which I can look into even, even further and have it solid on paper, so I remember, but as far as the, um, the, uh.
Cause that's, ultimately, for access, that's supposed to be the closest space, and it has to be available for a van, doesn't have to be two spots.
Okay.
Just one, and it has to have access for a handicap van.
Oh, yeah.
The only reason I'm asking this is, and I think I agree with Zach, what you've done, the due diligence that you showed is amazing, and it's great to, to see that. I just don't want, as the ADA coordinator, to have to come back later in another hat and say, wait a minute, you've done this, but now there's no signage, there's no spot, etc., it's not anything related to this board directly.
Right.
I just don't want it to interfere.
Okay, yeah, no, um, you know, that's something that I can definitely take into.
And you can always reach out if you need to.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Conditioning the building permit anyways, I believe it would have to be.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely do that, um, like I said, we have ample parking space that I could, that would be feasible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any, anymore, any more questions to the applicant?
No, no, good.
All right, so then I, Zachary Karen, uh, will make the motion, uh, that we, um, close the public hearing aspect of this case, so we can deliberate.
I agree, Logan seconded the motion to close public input.
Any discussion? All in favor? I.
I.
I have one thing we should, who was the voting members?
Over to Zach.
Yeah, okay, so we're all, okay.
Um, I don't know how you guys feel, I mean, there, I, I have absolutely no reason that I would not be in favor of this, um, we have. All the questions and then somebody, I think were answered, um, you know, the, the priority for us, for, for me, obviously, is, uh, safety, which has been acknowledged, uh. And the borders and what it would do to the neighborhood and the town, it's only gonna be a benefit to the town, uh, that I would find it hard to believe, maybe anyone that would think, uh. Any adding education, especially for young children, would be a detriment, and no applicants, I'm sorry, no, um, partners came forward feeling that it, they didn't want this in their neighborhood. Um, personally, I, I don't have anything else that I need, uh, how do you guys feel?
Well, did we have anybody on Zoom?
Well, we have, we, we had the one about her, but she was more just kind of curious, uh, as to how the shared driveway would work, and it was really more a point of her information, it wasn't really a. I do or don't want this, in fact, I believe at the end of that meeting, she says she was in favor of it, she just wanted some information about how that would work.
Yeah, I remember, I didn't know if somebody was on today, on, on Zoom.
I, well, actually, it, it wouldn't matter at this point because we closed the public input for this portion, so even if there was, I mean, they would have had that chance to speak, but they. You know, we, we wouldn't be able to take it now unless we open, uh, or to reopen it, but I don't feel the need to do that unless you guys do.
Zach, the only thing I would say is that since this is being recorded, um, and there's trouble with the, the cable and stuff too, that each one of the members who's voted I should just state their name. That's all, so that's on the record.
Right. Um, so Greg, what are your thoughts?
I, I'm good, go ahead and make a motion.
Sure, all right, yeah, uh, whenever you're ready, Greg, if you wanna make the motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, Greg Logan.
A second.
Eyes, uh, Zachary Karen will second.
He can't, that was seconded by at least.
At least, okay, okay. All right, any discussion?
Uh, there's one, well, I, I don't think it's necessary, it's the building department, make sure the ADA stuff is required, um, so I.
Yeah, I mean, they, 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 sorry, sorry, they, they have to anyway, for the whole, they, they have to meet those. Requirements anyway, so it's not like a condition or like, uh, we need to do that, they have to do that at this point, so it's not like we need to. Reinforce that in the whole permitting process or anything, so those are things that will be checked off, so.
So the motion was approved and it was seconded by at least, all those.
Yeah, by roll call, you have to do because of.
Greg Logan.
I, Zachary Karen.
Greg Logan, I.
At least Spencer, I'm.
All right, congratulations, you guys are all set, um, Carrie, I guess we'll, uh, help you guys with, you know, the, uh, the, the next steps. Um, uh, thank you guys for being so, uh, great with all this, I really wish every applicant, even developers, were able to have this stuff as put together as you were, so thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you, I, I thank you for, um, giving me the heads up to what to look for.
Sure, when you see Mr. Zach, uh, he'll walk us.
Yes, and the ADA, uh, he did mention that, actually.
Good luck with.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, second thing on the public hearing is Stonegate Landing LLC, West Blue Side of Somerset Ave, map nine, modification, comprehensive permit.
Never show up, never shows up. But it was really nice to have a very pleasant, uh, young woman come to here, and if the applicant behind her, it's always better if you're smiling on that first. It might not end up that way, but, you know, it's nice to start out that way. Okay, what do you be stack?
So we got some letters, I seen some things, um, I, I don't know if anybody else has seen it, but I've seen some things in here, um, about the warranties on the houses and.
Yeah, I, it was the chairman, what, Carrie has been, um, very nice following me, all the correspondence, and, uh, I've decided to address every one of them. Um, the last time I was here, um, you, uh. Yeah, Lisa Parkett was, um, had written a letter to the board, um, concerning about, uh, flooding on her property, um, and, um. And I, you asked me to go out and take a look, um, so I was out to the property, uh, actually twice, unfortunately, uh, Lisa wasn't home either time. But I took a good look around, and, you know, it, it's in my letter, um, Lisa purchased that house in two thousand ten, it was thirteen years ago, and.
She send you anything in writing saying there was a problem?
What's that?
Did she send you anything in writing since then that there was a problem that she had sent to you?
No, I, I first heard about it from, from Carrie, okay, okay, and so I just went out and looked, and, and the packet that I sent in. That, I wanted to show the board. You know, I sent Carrie a lot of stuff today, I look on it, but I have a series of pictures, yeah, so, you know. When I have the property, there were ten very small shrubs there, okay, and just in the front of the house, that vegetation's overpowering it, okay, and. And this is one side of her house, which again, she's added a lot of bushes, and, um. And it's just trapping the water against the house, okay, I put in there, you know. What's that?
She was talking about a front yard.
The front yard and both side yards and the backyard.
Picture from the street, when I drove by.
Okay.
The property, the land leans towards her house.
Excuse me?
The topography of the land.
Yeah.
From the road swells in the front of her house.
Yeah.
Not as much as the side of what I saw in pictures.
Um, what are you saying, out in front here, sir?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, that, okay, wouldn't be sending water to her basement, it would be sending it to the street, she's not pounding on any.
Water in the basement, I don't think that was.
Yeah, um. Gives her letter.
Water, can't cut the grass, it was food.
What's that?
It was holding water, and she, we couldn't even cut the grass because it was becoming food.
Yeah, the problem is, the, she needs a landscaper, okay, she's, um, the vegetation's overgrown, she's changed the contour, she put a pool in the backyard. She added a, a shed right up against the side of the house, and that alone is trapping water between the shed, there's no way for the water to get away, okay? And, you know, over time, water settles around the foundation, okay, it happens everywhere, and that's part of normal home maintenance, you go out and get a couple bags of loom and, and keep the water flowing away. And, uh, but with everything, you know, even with the, uh, the, this whole area is, this is behind the house, this would be the right side, the shed's there. It's only about two feet from the house, there's all this overgrown vegetation, her, uh, the picture on the knee shows her downspout, it's broken. The water doesn't leave the site, she built the grade up, and so everything's staying next to the house, you know, and. It, as I put in my letter, it, I've known, in my building life, I tell everyone, the only way to keep a water out of the basement is to keep it away from the basement, you do that with grading. And we have really hopped at soils at Stonegate, nothing goes down to the ground, okay, um, it just, so when the rain hits, it's full away. She needs to extend her downspout speed, so they actually drain onto, on one side, they don't get to the driveway, they just pack up next to the house, and in. And this thing in the back, that just screams, uh, standing water, and then the grading around her pool, and when you put a pole in, okay, it's. It's lost all its pitch, and that's where it's staying. Okay, I mean.
But she never reached out to, uh, after the, the, like, you have any warranty, it says that.
I have a one-year warranty, so her warranty expired in two thousand eleven.
But not at no given time did she, uh, send you any letter that sent her, probably the warranty package.
The first time I heard about this was about six weeks ago, she was out walking, and she was telling me about her issue, and, um. I offered to come over and take a look, honestly, never got there, but then I, I thought she had hired a contractor to take care of it, okay? But that's a, a two-day job for a qualified, um, uh, landscaper, okay, to, but it's not, it's not over the top crazy, it's just. You know, I think all those big shrubs, you should get out of there, you know, and then. You've gotta raise the grade, if you look at page, you try to find out, see this next page, the third page, and you get is where the leader is, you see the front, no. When I was out there, it hadn't rained for two or three days, but if you look down on the bottom of the foundation, you see that wet line that's there? That's telling me water was pounding, they were releasing it, okay, and it's everywhere around the foundation, nothing's going away, everyone's, everything's going in, but. You know, the remedy is like, all we have to do is, oh shit, is getting, they build them up two or three inches and pack it, and the problem would disappear.
But I don't believe this, I'm not scared, the fact that she's not here to defend herself, but I believe she was talking about her front yard, and she had other stuff. I understand what you're saying, how now the water has nowhere to go, it's pooling on the property, it's hot in the heat. Um, the topography of the land, from what I saw when I drove by, it gets quick, uh, in the front of a house, but I don't see any pictures of that here, I wish it.
No, I mean, the picture I have, the front of the house, and that, and like, that, that was not brought to my attention, she was coming all the pounding.
I, I didn't hear her saying anything about the base, and if she did, then.
Yeah, she, she complained, it's coming in the basement, it was steaming water, it was in her backyard, yeah, whatever's in the front gets out there, okay? And, and if it's downward valley, it doesn't crawl up back into the house, you know, it follows the path of least resistance.
Zach, have you had a chance to look at any of these pictures?
Uh, no, I have not. Yeah, if you, if you hold up the laptop camera, I'll be able to see it.
And there is quite a bit of rope from the side of the house, um, the downpipes are not into where they're supposed to be running away from the house, sitting on the side. She's put a pool in the backyard with a swale going away from the pool, leaning back towards the house.
Yeah.
He also attached in his warranty purposes, uh, he guarantees the house and all the property for one year, minus cracks and foundation and stuff.
Yeah.
Um, and what I got, she never reached out to him until just recently, and we got to this on that now, that's one of the things that I wanted to bring.
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Mr. Logan, um, everyone knows a house isn't built to last forever, and, and normal maintenance, both inside and outside are essential. And it just hasn't been going on outside of the house.
That's one thing, uh, we brought, so how are we doing with the road engineering? Doesn't look too good.
The, uh, next letter I responded to was one from a Mr. Lemonland.
Yeah, in response to Paul Lemonland's email.
Paul Lemonland, yeah, um, and. And I, I replied in detail, okay, um, again, Mr. Lemonland moved in the house, my twenty, well, October second, two thousand fourteen, that's nine years ago. Um, when he first moved in, the winter after he first moved in, he did have a mold issue in the attic, and.
Get ahold of you with.
What's that?
He did get ahold of you.
He got ahold of that, I responded, and I went down, I went up in the attic, and instantly I saw the problem. The people who did the installation, the company, the attic installation, they pushed out into the overhangs, what that, and you know, we have a ventilator socket. And the idea is it goes up through the socket and up through the ridge vent, he shut that flow of air out, and that, especially in the winter traps moisture in the attic. And less than intended, mold will develop, so when I got there, I saw what it was, I was back within a day or two, with the help, but we pulled all the insulation back. And then, um, I got some good old Clorox bleach with warm water and Tepcent, and I sprayed it, and the mold went away, okay? And that's the only call I ever got from him, and then he talks about, um, that I. But I took it, and then he's talking about other people that have problems, okay? I haven't got one, I never got one letter from anyone within the first year concerned about, um, a defect in workmanship, okay? It never happened, and then he alleges there's a whole bunch of other people, that's not true, it's just not true.
I, I, I don't wanna, I don't need me to interrupt, I, I actually have to, uh, kind of, uh, agree with him here in the sense that. We have certain things that we've addressed, and you know, and obviously, his team is working on fixing, um, but I certainly don't want the residents to think. Tell us everything you don't like about your house, and we're gonna fix it, that because, uh, Mr. Federoff has a point, you know. We're not here just to talk, I, I'm not, I'm not saying I, I don't want to gamble, or what I'm saying is. This can't turn into a, my faucets don't aren't the color I wanted them to be, if we open up that can of worms, we're gonna be getting letters every other day about the countertop being, being wrong or something. So, the, essentially, the residents have to understand the, uh, list of things that we talked about at that first meeting. That, that list that we have is, is, is being worked on, but we can't hear these, like, things, e- especially if he has no. If he's right by saying, I have no correspondence about this until now, uh, that first meeting was not opening up a complaint line through the zoning board. If they have issues that they wanna take up with him, that's fine, but, uh, Mr. Federoff, I don't want you to feel like you have to bring up every one of their issues that aren't related. To what we have to talk about, I mean, I, I, like I said, this is not, we're, we're not the customer service agent who's gonna feel anything that they don't like about things, especially where it's like. If warranties have passed in the house, it's been in for ten years, we don't need to keep hearing about it, you know, I, so I, you know, I don't want him to feel like you gotta. Bring all this to us unless it's regarding the list we already talked about.
Yeah, so like I said, he's got his coverage of living in a warranty, uh, one of us within sixty days of the date of, uh, taking up possession, notify the builder any concerns. Obviously, the mold issue, they wouldn't know until a season, because usually goes between summer to fall when you start to see that, and then it sounds like Mr. Federoff did step up. Take care of that concern within this one year rate, um, so that's, I just wanted, that was what was in the packet, but the concerns that we had, as this board, if I remember correctly, was mainly the infrastructure.
Right, exactly, it, it pertains to the development, not each individual house, I mean, if, if that was the case, anyone could say, yeah, my staircase is, is kinda crooked, like. You know, that's got no, that's got nothing to do with the development itself, I mean, w- w- we are talking about the environment of, and the infrastructure, whether it's the roads or. Uh, bases that need to be trimmed, stuff like that, yes, absolutely, that's our job to be on top of that kind of stuff and helping, making sure those things are met, but. No role of the zoning board is to meet the, uh, uh, satisfaction of each part. uh, uh, satisfaction of each part of the inside of their home. That's not anything that we need to hear. And, I mean, I, I appreciate him being open and sharing this with us, but if you have a problem with, with your basement flooding, unless it's directly related to something of the infrastructure or like, for the insulation and stuff like that. I don't mean to put this as, what is it gonna sound, I don't care. I mean, it's, it's, not that, not that I don't want it to be discussed amongst the people who need to know about it. But our job is to take care of the comprehensive permit and the infrastructure. So if it doesn't have to do with that, I really don't need to hear all this, Greg, I don't know how you feel.
I agree a hundred percent. I know you haven't had a chance to see it, so I wanted to bring it up. Um, and
Yeah.
I feel like we're, we're, we're getting off topic with what I saw in the packet. Because we were basically trying to find out uh,
Right.
contains uh, a engineer for the uh, infrastructure. Where we stand with that, how are we making out with the state, cutting the curve? Are we, those are the things that I'm kind of concerned.
Exactly. I, I, I guess what I'm saying, there's more of a, I'm not critiquing what has been brought up today. I'm more letting Federoff know for a, for the future reference. Anything like this, you know, I don't want him to feel like he has to bring before us. And, and if the applicant feels that we should hear it, they can filter it through Carrie. And we can decide, look, that's not a DBA map, that's not a DBA issue. You'll have to take that uh, not during meetings and on your own time, but not on the board's time.
Okay, so back to you, uh, where do we stand with the uh, infrastructure engineering?
Mr. Logan, um, could you tell me who, who that was? I can't understand a word. I can't defend anything.
Green?
Green, excuse me, Green International?
Green International. So you haven't reached out to the company, Green International?
Yes, I can talk about that.
Yeah, that's what I want to know.
Okay, let me go. Yeah, um, you know, um, Paul Cousins, who represents Abel Landy, okay? And the, but the notice for project change, okay? And I am not represented by him and I just working with him to get you the information. And I thoroughly agree, I need to fix the project, okay? And um, but the correspondence went between him and this company. And I just hear about it again. And we were going to meet last week. And that was the first thing I want to talk about. I've read their proposal, I reviewed um, the money side, what they're going to do. I think it's fair and I'm willing to sign the contract. I just want to make sure you are too.
Well, at last, last meeting we had, we wanted you to hire. We thought it was more smart to hire this same engineer that works for town so you could be, everything we're looking to be addressed.
That was a great idea.
So that's why we turned you on to him. And I don't know where the confusion came with Paul Cousins, because Paul Cousins pretty much made it clear that he has nothing to do with this party, he only has to do with Abel.
That's why, if I can just reach out to him, correct? Um, they, Paul sent them some plans, I have much better plans. I'd want to arrange to be with them on the first visit to give them the whole lay of the land. And I think it's great way to get started. And I'll do that this week.
Carrie, you have all their information, right?
Green International?
Yeah.
I do.
Uh, one thing I want to say about this too, uh, to kind of uh, piggyback on the whole uh, miscommunication about the engineer. From what I feel like from a couple of meetings ago, when we mentioned the name of the engineer and I think Paul was like, oh, don't they primarily work on X, Y, and Z? He does not get to window shop our engineers. So if he has a problem with who we're providing, if he wants to hire a, a, what, you know, we're keeping ours, he can't say, no, I want you guys to use who I'm gonna find. Or I'm not gonna listen to what your engineer finds because I don't like him or I don't know what he does, I want to go with mine. That's not how this works. So if he, he doesn't have to use the same one that we have, he can get his own. But he can't then choose who we used on the flip side. And I always say that because I, I, I remember his reactions to when we were discussing our engineer, he was kind of questioning it, oh, I don't know who they are, are they a big firm? He does not have any position to care who we have. That's the whole point of it being, you know, a third party. He can get his own if he wants to, he doesn't have to use ours. So, you know, i- i- if he wants to use ours, obviously he can, but he can't decide or have input on who we pick. And I feel like that's what he was trying to get at, at the last meeting that we had about this.
Yeah, I just thought it was cheaper for the applicant to use the same engineer and that's, that's the way we thought.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's why I, I thought, we're, we're, and I think that was why Carrie was, you know, telling him the name by like, here's his information, this is what his office is. Carry on. It's not a, how about you review him and let us know if you want us to use him? Like, that's not how it's gonna work and I really hope that's not what, how we think it's gonna work.
So what I, it's totally up to you, who you'd like to hire. But she has a name and information.
What's frustrating me, sir, is that I've told you, Paul, I have a, I'm hearing us, okay?
Yeah.
My, it's, I hear your answers very narrow. And every word you're saying, I don't agree.
So you understand this? We have an engineer that the town uses. The reason why we had stated to you that if you, we can hire our engineer or you can get your own engineer.
Okay.
However, time is the essence, we felt. If you were able to hire our engineer, he can be unit and draw at the same time. But without having to send it to a third party to review and draw, dragging it up. Totally up to you who you want to hire.
I'm in.
Okay, that's fine. You're gonna get the information.
Yeah, I'll do it, I'll contact him, I'll arrange, just get signed a contract with him, give him a deposit.
That's, that's what we were trying to do last week.
That's right.
So.
Yeah. I will do it, this tomorrow. Okay.
So you're gonna give him that information, okay? Zach, so uh, that's going to detail in all the, the, the entire infrastructure design and repairs that might need to be needed. Is there anything else you want to ask him?
Um, no, I don't think so, unless there's been anything new that you guys have heard that you want him to look into.
I agree. Do you have any concerns, the questions you've already been hearing so far, you asked to the engineer? With Mr. Cousins and Mr. Federoff?
I do.
Okay.
So last, after last meeting, my understanding is that the board wanted to expand the scope of the engineer's review to include not just the roadway, but all of the infrastructure for the project as well as any potential drainage issues of these two particular properties. And so I believe that the board took a vote on that. And as a result of that vote, I've sent a follow-up email to Mr. Cousins after the meeting indicating, and I copied Mr. Federoff on it, because I understood he was not representing Mr. Cousins. And I explained to them that this was the position the board took with regard to the engineering review. And I also advised Mr. Cousins that the board was surprised that nobody from Abel or Mr. Cousin, nobody from Abel came. The board was aware Mr. Cousin was out of town, that's, that's meeting. But they expected either Abel or Mr. Cousin to appear at the meeting now. Having not heard from anybody at all.
Yeah.
I spoke to Carrie, I forwarded her a copy of the email that I sent to Mr. Cousin and Mr. Federoff. And I uh, explained to her that it made sense to reach out to the, to Mr. Cousin and just confirm these two areas, which she did. And she sent it to Mr. Federoff. I think you have that email in your packet. There is a, there was two piece points to that email. Number one, it had to do with the fact that the engineer hadn't heard from anybody. And she wanted to know the status. And number two, she confirmed the fact that um, the applicant, the petitioner in this matter, needed to be present before the zoning board, because this is a continued public hearing. Mr. Federoff, you're not the petitioner here, you made that clear to us. You are involved because the board has a request before it to not only change the applicant in this matter, but to also eliminate any liability on this new applicant for phase A. And in order to do that, it made sense for you to be present. And your presence has been really appreciated. But the applicant is not here. It sounds to me, I'm a little concerned that there's been no communication with the engineer and no one is aware in that engineering firm that there's a larger scope of review that's being sought of, sought after by this board than what the original proposal said. Because that original proposal was drafted before the last meeting. Now, I, it wasn't my understanding that the town needed to be communicating with an engineer to explain all of this necessarily. This was somebody the applicant was going to hire. But due to the fact that we now have this separation, even with Mr. Cousins' involvement, and the poor communication that's happening, this is precisely why you need to have the applicant in front of you right now. And you need to, or Mr. Cousin is representative, it's representative. And Mr. Federoff, if he's being asked by whatever relationship you have with them, you're being asked to sign the bill and take these things. It makes sense for you to be here as well. My concern is, we are now two months into this. And you have a petition before you and very little has been done in terms of the applicant's actions to address the concerns that the board raised. And not only that, but this applicant is not even giving the board the courtesy of appearing, which is a complete violation of your comprehensive permit rules and regulations. Not only for the underlying permit, but it's also actually part of your modification provisions as well. It's part, um, rule six point one, subpart F. And that says, the developer or its representative shall attend any and all of the meetings of the board associated with the requested modification, including but not limited to a meeting to determine if the requested modification is substantial or insubstantial, and any public hearing scheduled for the requested modification. Failure to so attend may be grounds for denial of the requested modification. At this stage, my suggestion to the board is that you make a determination among yourselves whether you want to grant the applicant and Mr. Cousin one more opportunity to appear before you. Perhaps Mr. Federoff can also bring that message to them. But you do not have any of the information you were looking for brought to you. You don't have any of the engineering information. You don't have any, I, I don't know if Mr. Federoff can give you update on the playground um, as well, but you don't have any of the um, pieces you've been concerned about addressing the limitation of liability to the new applicant. Nothing has been brought before you to address any of the concerns that you have. And so I don't know that you have any need, there's been a, there's been a violation of your procedural rules with notification to the developer. And I believe an email from Mr. Cousin, which I don't see in your packet, but which was provided, indicating that he does not intend to attend this meeting and neither does the applicant. And after receiving that email, I reached out to Mr. Cousin and asked him to give me a phone call last Friday afternoon, and he informed me that he was golfing and wasn't available to call me. And then I told him that I would be available all day on Tuesday before four o'clock if he wanted to call me. That I was doing so as a courtesy to discuss the pending meeting tonight. Um, and he never, never reached out or responded to that. So I do have significant concerns. I have a significant concern that if we were to go forward tonight, that the scope of the proposal that gets signed with Green International, because I do think he would sign it, is not going to reflect what the board is looking for. And that at some point in time, if that's the case, when Green International does get involved, they're going to actually give you a bill for much more than what you've been quoted. Because it is significantly more involved than what was originally discussed with Green International. And because no one's communicating with them. And the town is happy to have them on board and let you use them. But, but you've got to actually get them involved in this matter. Otherwise, the town will hire them. The town will bring them on with their own scope of proposal. And through a fifty-three G account process, they will bill the applicant. Whether that's you paying for it, Mr. Federoff, or Abel Wheelie LLC is of no concern to the town. The town is prepared to do that and you can hire your own engineer. You just indicated that it made no sense. And to do so, but we are having this communication where the board's concerns and the scope of the work the board wants, wants done is actually going to get addressed.
I need that information, okay?
It was emailed.
And, and you're telling me now that's been expanded?
But I emailed that to you.
Oh, did you?
I did, you were copied on the email I sent to Mr. Cousin the day after the last meeting.
Well, yes, you did, I read that. But all I got from Mr. Cousin is I have to run a layer inside contract and four thousand.
Okay, but this is the problem I'm having, because Mr. Cousin isn't your representative. He, so what he's telling you to do is not what I, what the board is telling you to do. The board wants a engineer involved, they want an engineer review. It's my understanding that's been agreed to by both yourself and the applicant. An engineer review of the current status of the project, which is a, not just the roadway anymore, but the infrastructure associated with that roadway, as well as some drainage issues in cer- on certain properties. And that is where the scope of the review needs to be expanded to. And you can take that email over to Green International and say to them, this is what the board is looking for.
I do have that video, okay? And I did, look, I did. And if you could, retention basis, and if you, if you're looking at drainage system, you're gonna where the water ends up and whether it's, it's working. That's just, I wouldn't expect anything else.
Right.
So I'm, you know, I just have to
Zach, it's just a minute.
Sit down and make sure it meets what you look and then get it.
And however you want to do it, but this was two months ago, the board asked for this. And, and my concern is that there was immediate communication after the last meeting that addressed the scope expansion, because that hadn't been the case when you, when Green first was contacted.
Right.
It was now expanded and then there's been no communication around that. And we can set the next date in June for another meeting here. But we need to have people appearing, because it, it does not appear to me that this applicant is truly vested in this development.
I'm feeling the same way, but I have a contract and I have to do what I have to do to stay in line with it, okay? I'm doing the best I can, okay? But um, I can't defend any of it. I can tell you, Cyrus, and Sue, well, I did go, I hope the silver engineer, you have a letter in the packet tonight.
Yes.
That I acquired and paid it at my expense. I have been to deal to sound the process for a new curb settlement. That was after the first meeting. And they, they're going through that and they are working with Silla. And I actually promised to make about that street, I very, the entrance, I'd like to bring to the board's attention, okay? Um, the original curb acquisition.
All right, I, I, the chairman, I have the right to interrupt the speaker. I have a question for Marguerite.
Thank you.
Hold on.
Mr. Federoff, our chair would like to say something for a minute. It's hard for, to go back and forth, so if you could let our chair speak for a minute?
Sure.
Go ahead, Zach.
To be honest, after all of this, I'm a voting member on this, correct?
Could you repeat that, Zach?
I'm a voting member on this, correct?
Zach and Dave are voting members.
Okay. Okay, so my question is to Marguerite, I want, I want Marguerite to speak, no one else, we can hear her, please. Hypothetically, if I were to close the public hearing on this, I'm done with this, we're taking a mo- emotion right now on this case. My, my issue is that after that, any of the things that we've discussed that we want cleaned up in the development, taking out this Paul Cousins aspect of it. This, is that, do we have any, do we have any stance to keep that stuff going or at that point, no?
So if you were to close a public hearing on this, then you would need to vote on what you have before you.
Okay, so uh, Marguerite, do you mind just coming closer to the microphone, sorry?
Okay, Zach, if you were to close a public hearing on this tonight, you would only be able to vote on what's before you. As well as the fact that there isn't an applicant who's appeared and you have procedural rules adopted by this town many years ago, that requires an applicant to be present at every public hearing.
Okay, so then.
That have been submitted by Carrie, reminding the applicant of that obligation. I don't know if you have the email that Paul Cousins sent in response, do you have that in the record yet?
Not in the packet, but we're gonna.
Okay, so that could be added into the record tonight. And then um, And then um. You would have my emails as well, I think that's part of your packet, but I would make sure before you close the public hearing. And then both would need to be both substantive and procedural in nature.
Okay. Okay, so, um, that being said, I I. I'm talking, so at this point now, I'm addressing only the two voting members on this case. Uh I'm not, not the applicant. My question is that, I I I feel as though we take those other pieces of correspondence and. Close the public input and make a motion on this case, because we are wasting time, we are wasting money. Keeping this going out any longer and it's getting ridiculous. At that point, if there are residents in this development that feel as though that there are issues regarding the infrastructure that they still want addressed. Because. They haven't been addressed, and they can, I think, bring that to the board's attention and we can treat that as a separate new matter. Cause like right now, if you think about it, all of these things with the infrastructure really only came up. Because someone was interested in buying the other part of the property. It's not like these were things that we were, you know, actively already discussing. So my, the reason why I'm saying all this is that I don't want to close this public uh public hearing. Make a motion, deny, and then it's like, okay, guys, see you later, and they're like, well, what about all those things that we want to address? Now they're not going to be addressed, because no one's gonna be buying this property right now. So I don't know how you guys feel, but I I I feel as though that. Those things can still be addressed, but they would have to be addressed as a separate item and no longer part of this um. Proposal that we have before us, do you guys agree or disagree?
Voting members. I agree with that.
Okay. Uh how about any other, any of the board members aside from voting members?
Well, are we gonna discuss the curb cut and the playground and the things that we had talked about them?
Right, that's. Sorry, guys.
All right, uh. Zach.
Yeah, so what Susan said is she's, she's interested before doing that and hearing more about the curb cut and the playground, because it sounded like. Richard may have an update on some of that. Um and that was within the purview of the board for this application. I also want to be fair to everybody. Once you issue that decision of denial, as with any decision, it's subject to an appeal. So want to be, I want you to be aware of that. Um I don't know how the applicant will respond, I do think that your procedural rules. Have been in place for a very long time, I do think there was notice given, perhaps the applicant. You may want to wait one more meeting, especially knowing that there is a little bit of a Zoom issue. And there was. Slight delay in the posting of this meeting, so in order to. A hundred percent, perhaps you want to give them one more opportunity.
Okay.
Yeah, and you can just hear about these things and see what happens for the next meeting. But I do think it's very appropriate for you as a board. To voice your frustration, if you have any. With the fact that this doesn't appear to be a very productive meeting, because the applicant is missing.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's pretty clear in the tone that I've exhibited, I don't know how the other board members feel, but.
Zach, Greg here, I'm listening to, uh, reading some things in here, Mr. Cousins. Will not be attending the public hearing until Mr. Federoff has complied with the request of the zoning board of appeals. But Mr. Cousins is the applicant, my.
Well, he represents the applicant, the applicant is Able Landy now, well said.
Right, so. Um the applicant has failed, according to the Titan Zoning Board of Appeals Permit Rules. Uh Mr. Federoff is here in regards to trying to do the right thing for the actual physical property that's there now. But if the applicant is not gonna be here, um I feel we should deny it at the next time, at the next meeting. Give them another chance, Mr. Federoff is here. However, Mr. Federoff has a lot of things he needs to get rolling before the board. Will feel comfortable with that, and if Mr. Cousins and Able Lynn is not interested in coming to the next meeting. Until these things are resolved, then we should deny it according to our local bio.
Right. I I agree, Greg, and see, and that's kind of where I'm getting here, is that like. Right now, there's a piece of property that someone's, uh, oh, sorry, uh, part of this development, someone is interested in buying. That app, that applicant is saying, well, I'm probably not gonna get this approved until this stuff is cleaned up. That's for him to discuss with Federoff, we're not their mediators. So. At that point, they need to, not they, I mean, like, those issues that. Are gonna make this at all possible in in Cousins' eyes, he knows what those are. Where's our role in this now? Our role is not to babysit their negotiations, I mean. I I if if by that email Paul is saying, nope, I'm not coming until those things are cleaned up. Then he can see that with Federoff, that's got nothing to do with us now at this point. It has to do with us in the sense that we've said what our things are, but he can't just decide, no, I'm not gonna come until that happens, well. Better beware, is kind of what I'm looking at here, like. He, he's had so much time now and knows what needs to be done. Basically Paul's saying, you know what, I'm gonna sit back and relax, I'm gonna wait until Federoff and the board got this through, then I'll come through and and get my proposal in. That's not happening, we're not gonna sit here and be like, okay, did you guys clean this up, Paul, are you ready to do this now? That's not how that's gonna work.
I agree.
So Marguerite, uh, in terms of process and procedure, how would you word, uh, how do you suggest that we word the uh motions that we make? I don't wanna, with the communication issues, I don't wanna say everything come off the wrong way uh accidentally.
So Greg, I don't know if you necessarily made a motion or need to, I think that you could make a motion to ask Carrie to communicate with the developer that. Uh the board is. The the board continues to um want to inform the applicant that failure to appear at a public hearing. Could result in the denial and the board has stated its intention to so deny. At the next meeting if nobody appears. Um and will close the public hearing and issue a decision based on the information that has been submitted to date. Which the board notes has not been sufficient to meet all of its questions, to address all of its questions and concerns. You could make a motion, if you make that communication.
I mean, I don't mean, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but um I am in town and right now, I'm about to turn on to all the stories that I've. Do you, would you guys mind taking a five-minute recess and I can be there in person?
It's fine.
Yep.
Okay, so I I is the, I'll make the motion that we make a a five to ten minute recess and then. Um to reopen uh when I arrive, which I guess I'm turning on to old stories that I have now, so if you guys give me ten minutes, I'll be there.
I'll second that motion, this is Jonathan, for a five-minute, for a ten-minute recess.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Hi, Dr. Karen.
That's humanamus.
Hi, Greg.
I'll be there. I'll be there in ten minutes.
Okay, Zach.
Do we have a recess?
Yes.
We'll go get some alcohol, make this go easier.
Yeah, so if I were you, I'd go reach out to Paul.
What's that?
I'd reach out to to Paul. Well, I don't know either, but if I were you, I'd at least try to call him.
Okay, so we're back, um. We left off, we were.
So, yeah, we were leaving, going back and forth, and Mr. Federoff was working on uh some things that he. There's been some confusion with Paul Cousins and Mr. Federoff.
Right.
Federoff thought Cousins was gonna locate the uh engineering and as you can read in this particular case here, that is not Mr. Federoff.
Right, and I I I don't know if everything came into play before, but my issue was that. We're not. Here to mediate their business negotiations. And like I, again, if I'm reading this, I'm sorry, and I will be a fling here, all these things that the applicant, that the residents. Were talking about, only came to light to us. Because they saw this public, they they saw this public hearing notice and said, well, I hope the board knows what what's going on. So my issue was, if we were outright denied to shut this down, at that point hypothetically. What is that, we we can then continue to just to discuss what the applicant heard. And. So for Paul to say, no, I'm not going until that's all paired up. Yeah, Mr. Cousins will not be in the public hearing until Mr. Federoff has complied with all the questions the zoning board appeals.
So he's the applicant.
Yeah, Federoff's not, if anything, Federoff is overdoing his diligence here, because it's like. He's making the effort to show, to show up here to fix the things that we have.
So my question, would if we denied Mr. Mr. Cousins's application.
Correct, yeah.
Mr. Federoff would still have to be retaining and to take care of the road, but now.
Well, that's my question as to. Are you whose enforcement? It it it's, these only came, well, yes, but those things only came to light because of this case, so by denying this case. We can't go, we can't, we can't then go say, okay, so we can go back and talk about that stuff, like, no, we just didn't, we just denied it, we will not. So that was my, my question to Marguerite as to.
I'm not opposed to letting it go one more month. Mr. Federoff is doing his due diligence, he is willing to retain a. Uh engineer. Uh to take care of his matters, Mr. Cousin or some of them able is not here, motion denied. That's how I feel.
Right, but Marguerite, you understand my question though as to. How will we then continue to. See that everything else is being addressed, that we, what concerns we have around the infrastructure. And I'm right by saying if we deny this case, that that's it?
You're not necessarily wrong, so typically what happens is the zoning board has authority to talk about these types of things or they. It it becomes something that they can sort of facilitate the conversation with, because there's a request that's brought before it by. A developer, either to modify the comprehensive permit, to get further approval from the board for whatever the next step is. Um you could send a letter to the building inspector and you could ask that he. He put a hold on issuing future building permits. If things aren't addressed properly, um because obviously that's still happening, but we don't have in this particular case, there's no. Performance bond or any type of guarantee that's in place, because at the time. There was, years ago, there was a guarantee and the guarantee involved the infrastructure and it was done on a phased basis. And so the infrastructure for each phase is supposed to be installed, substantially installed, actually I believe it was for the entire development. Before any of the project got built. And so once that was completed. The performance bond ended, no one envisioned that this would take as long as it has taken to get to the point of construction. There wasn't, you know, this, the issue with the sewer pump station, that was all handled directly by the sewer department and not through the zoning board, so. Because there isn't a performance bond being held, you don't have that type of guarantee or insurance.
That's my question.
Um but you do know that what is happening, like what would be the next step for this development? The next step would be to continue to get building permits for the future homes or an occupancy permit or something else. So could the board ask the building inspector to stop issuing that because they've been hearing complaints? Yes. Perhaps Mr. Federoff already wants to address this on his own, just simply because he hears. The concerns of the board and he's gonna take care of it. I think it would be helpful for the board to hear tonight about where the playground sits, because. That's clearly something that relates to phase A, it is something he has been working on and you've asked him to. Address by tonight's meeting, so.
Right, and so that's basically, that's what I wanted to hear and then well, I would say, that's the confirmation I I wanted. In the sense that I don't want the right to say, okay, Chris, you guys denied it, but what about us now? What about all these issues? We have all these things we brought to you guys and now, but that's not happening. Now what? Because. Right.
Can we, can we potentially contingent, as a contingency, impose bond or no?
Not to deny, but I think that it would be something you would probably want to have addressed. Through the, it it would be tied to the request to eliminate liability. And separate phase A from phase B, and if that request is there, then I think you have no choice but to get a performance guarantee of some sort. And that's where the engineer will be helpful to give you a sense of what that proper amount would be. Because the reality is you don't truly bring the project to a close until. Phase B is completed and then you need to go for cost certification. And that's, you know, at that point in time, you're gonna get that project to a close and that's when you're gonna have the final plans looked at, et cetera.
Right.
So I think there will need to be a performance guarantee um piece to this. Should you decide ultimately to issue an approval of the modification request. But if you deny it, you can't deny it and impose.
If we, if we wanted to approve it at some point, it could be conditional.
Yes, and I would say it would, it would be necessary based on the requests that's before you.
Right, and my thing is that like, that's kind of what, one of my, I'd like to come here in person and make this clear was that. If we did vote on to deny, obviously I'm here, you know, compliance of our laws, we're done with this. The whole thing about the in engineering in the bigger purview. Is done, because the case was denied. So we can't then deny things like, wait, keep doing that. So that's why I was like, I wanna find a way to make sure those things are still being done. Without driving this specific request out anymore.
So we can make a motion to deny and not change the comprehensive permit.
Well, it wouldn't be.
He's asking for phase two to be in the document.
Yes, if it's denied, then everything stays as it is.
Correct, and then, and then, and then I would say, we would then choose how neither board wants to go forward with the condition. Or longer to use, with the status of the infrastructure. Of the development separately, you know what I mean? Like, we can treat that as a separate thing. No more talking about separating phase A and B, no more talking about Paul Cousins and Able Wheelie, like that's done. Now it's addressed that as a separate item agenda, do you know, do you know what I mean? That's how I would like to proceed and it sounds like we can do that.
No, if we don't change the comprehensive term. And we leave it as it is, he still has to fix the road.
Right, my question was, I guess I wanted to make sure, how would we proceed to do that, and which Marguerite has now answered?
Yes.
We would either request a building inspector.
Well, or performance bond.
And then, and then maybe have some. On paper, separate correspondence to Federoff saying, you know. Not talking about this, not, you know, saying. Due to recent information that we have, we would like to, we would like to, and we've done this before, if I'm wrong, we're on forty B's where. All of a sudden things come up and we ask the applicant to come before us and we, and we discuss things. And it's happened before, so I want to make sure that was still possible. And denying this at the same time, is what I was thinking about. I personally. Don't. Think it's necessary to continue this for the meeting, but if seeing as we have other avenues to make sure things are done, I mean. Why are we going to keep giving them chances and not, not Federoff, but Cousins and Able? Why, we were helping them out, what have they done to help us out with the things they asked for?
Right.
Not again, not Federoff, talking about Paul Cousins at this point, how many times has, have you contacted an engineer? I mean, I I I'm not gonna help them. I'm not gonna help them anymore at this point, I don't wanna keep telling, one more chance, guys, like, no, he hasn't come to any of these meetings. Not even on Zoom or a phone call. Oh, why, why should, what, what reason do we have to keep giving the benefit of the doubt? I I don't see any.
Right.
At this point, if you guys keep in mind, the more we do this, the more this is costing taxpayers money. With having, we're dragging this out for nothing.
Right.
We have them go on what's before us, I don't see any reason why we should keep this going.
Why not? For argument's sake, why not go the one more month with the language that Marguerite recommended?
But I, well, my argument is. Why? We we we've already done that, we've already said, I've heard from you guys, I've heard from you guys, what's going on? Like, how are we, there there aren't four strikes, and you know, I mean. What happens next? Oh, I didn't get that email, all right, one more month, like, no. I mean, I understand what the language, how we have worked, but why are we, all right, one more chance, like, we 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 giving them a second last chance. We gave them more last chances than we ever have the obligation to do. I I I understand what the alternative is, I personally is, I don't like the alternative, or the method, I don't feel, I don't see benefit in the second, to to the alternative to keep this going. What benefit would that do? Like, 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 like fourth fire on it?
I think he's very same, the one thing though, to to repeat is. The the curb cut, that was one thing that I wanted to know about and the playground, like two things.
And but we can still do that, is what I'm saying, separate from this, if the only way to get those things discussed was to keep this open. to get those things discussed was to keep this open, different story, I want to keep this open.
She, she's not the applicant.
That's the thing. At that point, because he's like, I'm, it's almost like, he's, he's like, I'm here, where are they? I'm not even happy. He doesn't have to come to, to, to discuss this. Paul should be here discussing this, not him. He's here because we've had questions about, but coincidentally almost, or by default, I could say.
Right, right. Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. I, I agree with, like you're saying, we're connected and not like an open thing of taking complaints from.
Right, I, I know, and I, and I, I guess I appreciate more information than no information, but like, I don't care about your installation. I don't, I'm sorry, it's not, that's not our purview and there are ways, there are ways that they can go, make you direct the waves to go look at that dress, but it's not on our dime.
Right.
It's not on, on, you know, our, we don't do that. Um.
Can, can we just ask Mr. Federoff, just since we're talking, this is still a public meeting, public discussion? Mr. Federoff, if this were voted to be denied this evening, what hardship speaking for you specifically? Is this imposed on you?
So just, this is going one more, Marguerite, one more time. On that because of the um, the agreement their attorney drove, drove. Behave myself, okay? But I also committed that agreement to everything possible to make this happen. I'm really confused that why we can't be doing both at the same time? Why can't we be talking about infrastructure and then they talk about the proposed state?
That was the plan.
But, but he hasn't showed, he hasn't showed up. So you're doing your side, he's not doing his, and I'm done giving you chances.
And Mr. Chairman, I would like right now to be asked to put the, put on every year, every agenda, you, every, or they, or every meeting you have for until this gets fixed. Okay, and if there's nothing more, I'll come in and give you a couple of updates, okay? I just want, I also want to get it done, okay? And uh, um, this thing has just gone and.
You do understand that your comprehensive permit still stands.
Yeah, and what's good for me.
It's, I understand what we're trying to do, but the applicant, which is Paul Cousins and Abel LLC have let you down on that.
It's right, is what I'm trying to say.
So what, what Zach's trying to get at is that we have given them multiple chances. Okay, in our bylaw, we didn't even have to give them that second chance. Now they're asking us to come again. So he feels, and I kind of feel the same way, that we have a comprehensive permit, we do not have to change the comprehensive permit. The only reason why they were in front of us to ask us if we could make modifications to comprehensive permit, which this development started as whatever, fifty-five year old, it's a two bedroom, it's a three bedroom, I don't even know.
I would, I would prefer.
And I know you didn't stop the job, I know you didn't stop this project. You took this project on. At the end of the day, as the chairman stated, that why should we, the zoning board of appeals, give Paul Cousins and Abel LLC any more reasons to say we're not coming?
Well, well, by doing that, we're almost saying, are you sure you don't want to come? Like, we've done so much.
They can reapply and do it all over again at their expense.
Right, at that point, if they want to, if they want to, we'll win our appeal.
We have, we counsel be it. We're paying for that as a time people. You know what I mean? She's here for that reason.
I heard she was free.
No, no.
You didn't know that? So.
But she's here, it's not, it's dead, and trying to get it going.
And they got her fixed, there's nobody here.
And this, and way you could, uh. The whole convention started, because I wanted to leave, I was going to sell the property town.
Right, and that's why they came on that meeting was to make sure that that was.
They have never done that, and we're working on perfect, you guys, I am getting progress and I thank you all.
Well, we're not denying that. I mean, I, I'm denying their progress, not yours. I'm, it's, it's.
That's the worst.
Nothing will change with it. I do whether you um turn it down, they continue it. I will continue to do what I say.
Right. Okay, Marguerite, do you, do you feel that detriment to us not giving them a third chance?
So I, if we didn't have issues with technology tonight or the posting of the meeting and changing it, I would say that I felt pretty solid. I mean, I expect that there will be legal challenges to this, but I felt that it's, you know, pretty solid. Uh, I don't like those two particular aspects of do, making this decision tonight.
Okay.
Also interesting as I'm looking back at the actual application, it does say that Mr. Cousin is sending this on behalf of our client, Stonegate Landing LLC. So it's a little unclear to me exactly who Mr. Cousin represents at this stage. So, I mean, I think that if the applicant truly is Stonegate Landing LLC, then Mr. Federoff has been here.
Right, right.
Um, and it needs to be the clarification that, you know, it needs to be a representative of the transferee. I, I don't know. So I guess I might, if based on all of that, I, I don't think the board needs to be making, you know, inefficient use of its time. But because this may be able to resolve a potential dispute down the road, it might make sense to try one more month. Hopefully between now and that month, somebody is going to have a conversation with either Mr. Cousin or somebody from Abel Landing LLC, yes. And they will start being involved.
Okay.
So that's the incident.
Okay, no, no. Well, we can't, we can't say anything to you, we. So what we, we want is to, is to give this to the next.
But it, before you do that, since he's here, do you want to hear about the playground or something?
Yes, I, I, I didn't, I didn't realize, I, I guess to the, you take an issue, it's a great place call. I didn't realize that there actually was a thing. I thought you were hoping for more. I didn't know that actually was a thing, so, okay.
I'd like to have the playground. Uh, curb cut. Improvements I've already made to project, we didn't even ask you to, okay, and a better day. Um, on the playground, um, I have had it, um, the, the benches and, and the table out there, uh, they were really weathered. But I want you to know that is public playground, okay? So I had my painter in there last week and he, and, and the benches and sees, look like you can, you might want to sit on them. Also, I've been working with my, a subcontractor, get all that heavy equipment out of there and only bring it when he needs it. And I think that the kids who enjoy the playground, they should have a nice setting. So I'm gonna get, I expected the last big piece to be gone by now, but it's still there and that's the crusher he has on site.
Alright.
I, but that's going to get out and even the small backhoe. And that'll give you a chance to clean it up around there. I mean, it's, you know, just get rid of the weeds, the pile of stuff. So when the kids over there feels, they feel better.
Yeah, it's open now, right?
What's that?
It's open.
Let me get to that circle. We're not quite there, okay? Alright, because first, you have to, I have reached out to my insurance company and they, they cautioned me that I should bring that playground up to perfect condition before I place a policy. But they are going to send someone out to do an inspection.
Okay.
Okay, and if it isn't perfect, then I'll control. They have to determine it is safe for the age group that's there. Okay, so I have two guys coming um to go over the swing set and all that. Um, the other thing is we have an overgrown weeds in there, okay? And um, I'm going to be treating that with chemicals as early as tomorrow. And I don't want any kid in there for a week, right? We're going to be safe about that. And um, but I, I hope to have it open, but I have to be able to give an insurance policy. And it has to be safe, okay? It'll be, it'll happen in June. I'm not sure how fast, I don't see it, okay? Alright, and the second thing on the curb cut, I did go to, as you know, uh DOT and I got a copy of the previous permit.
Yeah.
And uh, and they told me that, yeah, the permit was issued, but it was never inspected. Now, I was nowhere in sight when all that was going on, okay? But also, the grade, the way the road was graded on that plan isn't what, what it looks like out there, okay? Alright, now, anecdotally, and I, this is what I get told, I guess at the time, now, that went in before any housing started, okay? And in prior to the road, road was so to go in, there was a tremendous amount of water leaking that site, hitting one thirty-eight, going across the street, and I'm told it flooded out the pump station in town. You can check with that people here, okay? That's what I've been told. So when it came time, they went out there to do the curb cut, um, they, the, whoever's on site supervising it, said, oh, we want to make this higher because we want to make sure no water gets out there. Now, in itself, it's silly because all the water drain goes the other way into our drainage system. Uh, my predecessor, cut the drains, swam, everything was going that way. So, yes, so the idea of this pick, huh? My thing is foolish, okay? And I think we can drop it right down to the cat's face it. And there was a neighbor at the time, next door, who wasn't a fan of show aid, and uh, he wanted to limit the radiuses and um, and he has, right next to the entrance there, two huge bowls. Ninety percent are in public. I can just get them out of there. Now, the, the reason why we sold the house, okay? Um, I would be willing to knock on his door and see if he really loved those waters because we got their access up here. If you want, at a minimum, I'll bring a big machine, we'll roll it onto.
I think once you have our engineer, you know, to determine exactly where those rocks are located on the property, you're at that point taken.
Well, both are on, on, they're on that.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah. Oh, I see what you're saying.
The reason.
They are.
Ninety percent, okay, okay. Okay, and the, the previous owner wanted, and so, and then the previous owner wanted to live at the Calvisack and then someone had one of the hump, that's how it ended.
So basically it's like, I want the rocks that'll block my view, and I said, let's block my view. It's like, well, you have to, I mean, how is that?
But it, it's a whole, there's a new owner, it's been about five years. I don't know, you know, but actually it's in the road, we can take them out, you know what I mean? That's um, but, but I think somewhere in the town with me, I'm putting a big machine down to get them out of there. And I just roll them over. Okay, so that's been done. And remember that, that driveway comes out from that other house?
Yeah.
They, they go right into the road?
Yeah.
I'm cutting it out tomorrow. It's my land. They do not have access, okay? That's illegal connection into my, matter of fact, that property is, is number nine something, so it's landed. They faced one thirty-eight. Then, should, why is that numbered off this road?
I know.
Okay, well, we'll leave that alone. I will bring that. You've got enough to worry about, that's my issue, okay? I am going to go there, because early as tomorrow, I'm going to saw cut it back to the property line. That would be nice. I'm going to get some crushed stone and put it down there so they're not, it's not going to be. Oh, I know, you're going to lose two of the rocks out front. Um, okay, but I'll do that. And so because the water does drain back from there. So they're really stifling the water situation too. And it's just, and it looks awful, okay? But I'll clean it up, make it look nice, okay? And then deal with that myself down the road, alright? Um, so I did that and then oh, about a month ago, um, I paid, uh, the driveway was on two new houses. And while this JR, JR um driveway is there, um, I haven't buy a left next. Now there's space in, in front of the playground, this has been ugly forever. We cleaned it all out and we use a paver and put a nice surface on it. Now, when they, when they go, when the engineer does their job, they may tell me, I still have to do something different.
You don't.
But in the moment, what's that?
You also have to bus turn around over there.
Yes, okay, and uh, and I'm ready to do that, okay? I would, I think consensus of the neighbors that I had that, but if that's what it has to be, that's what I have to be.
It's in the comprehensive permit, so.
Yeah, it's in the permit, okay? And I actually brought that up to him at where several years ago. And he said, well, if the school superintendent says it's okay, I have no problem with it. So but right now they get door to door.
But that would give me a shit, that would give me a question.
I'm surprised the bus even goes in there because it's not Tom Brown.
Yeah, I.
What's that?
It's not Tom Brown.
That was always a news to me when it.
Yeah, because uh, the bus by rights should be picking them up on the end of the roads. Well, I, I, that's beyond what we get for.
But after you had the, the, had it your way.
I get it.
Okay, and a lot of people have to walk all the way up to the bus. And now they're just sitting home and getting picked, so. And um, and I also have gone out and purchased three speed bumps. I'm going to put a new signage on that road in. If that was truly one way in, there'd be no issue out of that street. That, that hump in, so many people use that. I have big signs that go, enter one way, so I'm going to double down on the signs. I'm going to, I had two speed bumps and the stairs disappeared. I'm going to put three, we all put down. And then as soon as I have, then I'm going to start being there six in the morning and tell everyone. And that doesn't convince them, you know, I, I.
So, Mr. Federoff, one thing I want to say to you is, is if, if you come in front of the board the next month.
Yeah.
Hire an engineer, don't wait for Paul.
Oh, no, 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 I was, I just, you know, I mean, part of what happened to me too is that was, I always thought what they wanted, this thing was convoluted, you know, all of a sudden it's all Richard's fault and not the applicant.
I mean, I, I think we're getting some, because they just have to be cleaned up and worn and understood around me. So more communication, more progress than we've had in a long time, so.
No, I think we can work together, get our project done.
And I think.
And now you have the addition of security, there is a whole number forty-eight acres out there. But I won't do anything, believe me, right? If this disappears, I'm not going to issue you to do anything until I finish the prep, okay? And we did talk about building permits, okay? Um, I would like to continue building. Now we have seven more lots out there, okay? Two might be affordable. Um, I've already made the application for affordable house on lot thirty-seven. I would like to apply, to finish applying for that in one market in the house and then just sit there and let me show you what I'm doing.
I, I mean, I wouldn't worry too, too much about that. I think Marguerite kind, kind of phrase that a, as a potential option for people discussing. So I mean, I don't want to get into the nitty gritty of that. I mean, I, I I don't think we're looking to deny or request that, ne- necessarily deny. I wouldn't worry about that. In terms of this discussion, I wouldn't.
In my comments, I had noted that since two thousand sixteen, um, I've built, I've built and sold three houses and I have one in, that's four houses in seven years. I haven't lived in two of them, right? And in that time, I put in stump sections, it was more than four hundred thousand, with no bond, with just out of money, okay? I finished it, okay? And but I'm trying to deal with it, but now, um, I'm getting, even though everyone said people are knocking my door, there's some new houses around, okay? So by working, I don't want to go wholesale, I don't want to finish, but I want to, I'd like to get, um, like the door in Stonegate Landing from Somerset Avenue, the first entrance to that back land is where the, just before the pump station. The next one up is where I have that white trailer. I'd like to get at least those houses up so that, you know, hopefully we get everything going and maybe just we can top a lower section and leave the top section, which still has houses left.
Yeah, we did. I, I don't want to talk too, too much about that. I want to focus on.
Okay, but the, the, I'm just saying, and I want to do it too, okay? And uh, I'm sorry for all.
No, no. Okay, uh, Susan, do you have any more questions regarding, I mean, look, curb cut in the playground, do you think that was addressed enough?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we're good in terms of the information we're looking for right tonight.
Yes.
Are we ready to make a motion to move this to the next uh meeting, which we have I think, like, June twenty-seventh, correct? Okay, so is there a motion to continue this case to the uh June twenty-seventh? We need to order three one members, so.
I, I should encourage you to make the motion to continue June twenty-seventh.
I'll second. Any suggestion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I would also like to say before you have my cell number, anything that you want to come take a look, I, well, okay, I'm not, I don't want to annoy you guys or annoy you. You know, the Marine, you can just talk to them, two, five. You know, the marine, you just talked about two five, that's right. If you're right, you're right away.
Yeah, no, I. Yeah, so we're gonna run the next thing, we have the review discussion act, Dyson Homes LLC for Dyson Woods subdivision regarding release of a fund under performance of the remix. Um, Margaret, do you wanna?
Sure. So since our last meeting, I had an opportunity to review the information presented by attorney Corey. It it addressed two pieces, it addressed the concerns the stormwater committee had raised and his position on behalf of the Dyson Woods LLC. That it was not. Um, it did not pertain to Dyson Woods, the Dyson Woods development. And then it also provided me with some additional information about the um. Septic disposal permit from DEP, sorry. Shouldn't give, and I'm forgetting my evidence. So. The groundwater discharge permit from DEP. So he had given me one that. A new one, a newer one than we, I had last received, but the new one does show that it's in the hall, in the name of Dyson Landings LLC. Or whatever the homeowners association was. So that addressed one of my concerns from years ago on the groundwater discharge permit. Unfortunately, the permit that he gave to me appears to have expired in twenty seventeen. Um, and it didn't, other than kind of providing me with a statement that. Um, Mr. Zola had given to the homeowners association when the transfer of. Of obligation took occurred, he had given the sum of forty five thousand dollars, which was supposed to be maintenance and repair of funding. Um, he didn't, I didn't see any per se evidence of that. I wasn't sure if there had been a second account created. And I explained to attorney Corey that both under the original groundwater discharge permit and under the um the updated one that he gave me. The maintenance accounts for both the replacement and repair and the maintenance of the of the common septic system. Had to be funded. Now, the first one said it had to be funded at the amount of forty five thousand dollars, the second one, the updated one, used a formula. Uh, so I don't know if forty five thousand dollars was appropriate, but you know, I said it also, it was in this groundwater discharge permit. That the obligation for there to be annual reports, both to DEP and the town was included. It wasn't part of the comprehensive permit, it was part of the groundwater discharge permit, which they needed for their common septic system. So in talking to attorney Corey, I said, you know, back when the board first brought this up and raised this, this was several amendments to the performance guarantee ago. And several years ago, actually. Um, they had created this process where they were holding back approximately twenty seven thousand dollars, I think, in bonding. With the expectation that, you know, five thousand dollars of that would be used for the legal document review. And then the remaining money would be held until one year after the town accepted the public ways. Because everyone anticipated at that time that the legal piece would be addressed pretty promptly.
Right.
Now, all of a sudden, the board finds itself in a position of being asked to release all of the five thousand dollars. And the concern that I expected the board to have was that five thousand dollars really isn't worth a lot. When it sounds like there might be a lot of work that needs to happen.
Right.
And I said, perhaps it might make sense for you to get a sense of, you know, the answers to my questions, which are pretty basic.
Yeah.
Is there a further permit that was applied for? And if so, these permits appear to be issued on about a five year basis, so I would expect if there was one issued in twenty seventeen, it's probably also expired. If it wasn't actually issued till twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, it's coming due. And I want to make sure that the homeowners association knows that they now have the obligation to get the permit. We can't recreate uh annual reports that didn't exist, but I asked him to provide some type of financial statement documentation. To show what accounts and what funding is in place to cover the the common septic system. Now, I do understand also that they basically re redid the common septic system about about the time of twenty seventeen. Because they needed to revise it anyways, based on some other things that they were doing with the development, so it's almost like it started off brand new. Uh, which is a good thing for for everybody, because it's not as old as you would think that it is, but. You know, I just, I asked him to confirm that the homeowners association was aware of all this, to find out the status of the groundwater discharge permit further, you know? Was it ever applied for again, and if not, we needed to get it applied for. And then also to provide that financial documentation. And I said, perhaps then, instead of just releasing all the five thousand dollars, we could actually revise the amendment and release all of it. And maybe we could do that in June. In the same conversation, I told him I wasn't yet aware of the stormwater committee's update and their review, and I would look into that. So I just saw this morning the letter from the stormwater committee that I think you need to read into the records of. And then, but I haven't heard further from attorney Corey, I've not followed up with him, so. Uh, my suggestion right now would be to postpone this until the June meeting, give me an opportunity to tell her up with attorney Corey.
That's fine, I'll I'll read to you in a minute now, so I gave May twenty fifth, twenty twenty three to myself and the zoning board appeals and also to the planning board and their chairman. Um, regarding on that seventeen block three hundred Main Street, this is from Nancy Goulart, the chairman of the stormwater committee. As I follow up to my letter of April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, in the meeting of the stormwater committee on Wednesday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty three. Please be advised that the members of the stormwater committee who are familiar with the areas above. And having looked at a plan slash overview of the area, including Dyson Woods and Centering Street. Feel there is no direct drainage from the area known as Dyson Woods that would potentially cause runoff into the Saturday River. Therefore, Stormwater Committee has no further requests or comments that would affect the release of the bond for Dyson Woods. Separately and apart from the initial request of and the information above, the Stormwater Committee uh will follow up to determine if there is runoff along the uh Saturday River from other sources. Please feel free to contact me if further information is needed and assign Nancy Goulart, the chairman of the Stormwater Committee. Um, who is one of them on this floor?
We were. Susan's back and Dave again.
Okay, um, so I'll make a motion if we continue this to.
I didn't hear him, Dave's uh can move.
Susan, Susan.
I'll make a motion if we continue this to the June twenty seventh meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, moving on to the uh review discussion act, item two, surplus equipment disposal. And I will read the letter to the record that I already completed.
So you want.
Well, that was kind of what I was gonna. It's not like that, I think you said it wrong. To the zoning board of appeals from Carrie dated May twenty first, twenty fourth. Surplus equipment disposal, but on items are considered surplus equipment to be considered for disposal. Two drawer file cabinets and one steel master drawer aspire, one steel master file drawer cabinet. Um, when you say disposal, do you mean literally throw away?
Well, no, what they do is they go to town auction.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, the one that I haven't worked, I lost, when I lost, there's only one, there's only one key that came with it. And I can't make copies, because home people on those don't have that small key. So they said, you can go to Amazon and buy copies of the key for twenty five dollars a piece.
No, you can find it cheaper.
Oh, okay.
If you just Google it.
If we're just gonna throw them away, and they come with keys, I'm just taking.
If you Google it, there is.
And if you go to town auction, I don't think they need to go to town auction, but if they're really thrown out, then I would say, but if they are going to be utilized elsewhere, then obviously.
No, they, if you Google it, because one of the files, so these file cabinets are being disposed because um. On Fridays, I work for an attorney and he donated six lateral um filing cabinets, which hold a lot more. So he donated six of them to the town.
So therefore, okay.
So. The zoning board took. Three, three of them, um, conservation took one, I don't know, various departments took some. But zoning board took three, so we're disposing these three.
Okay.
To place that, but if you, and one of them, the key broke. So, um.
I'll take that one last time.
So what you do is you just Google it, and I bought one for like seven dollars.
Oh, alright.
Yeah. You can get it.
So I I don't think we do.
You did, you do need to make a motion, um, because this has to go to uh the selectmen and FinCom, because then they have to uh put it for town auction.
Oh, okay, so then I'll make a motion uh that the two uh fi- I'm sorry, the two fi- the two five drawer cabinets, the one steel master five drawer cabinet. Are no longer used by zoning board and can be uh forwarded to the selectmen and FinCom for their.
Surplus.
Surplus. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, oh, okay, I did a couple pieces of public input, but first amend FY twenty fourth budget forward members. Is there a paper that was lost?
Um, it's not attached, is it?
I'm not gonna count, I just, okay.
Well, it was just an email from um. From me with the discussion that I have with the town administrator and the reasoning why.
Okay, so um, it was brought to my attention that there were, that the, there was a. Recommendation for a two percent increase for the board member seconds. And my personal initial reaction was. Ax these, for what reason? I didn't know, it was coming from Mike, who I trusted when he doing his job, but I personally didn't know why. I'm not questioning it, I just, I just didn't know why, so I, I said, I have a hard time justifying the increase. Under no reasoning, I didn't guess who would want more money, but again, at the taxpayer's expense. So what, because we should? So I just asked that we get some kind of written funds as to why this increase is warranted. So I'll just read it into, so this is from Carrie to myself and Mike. Um, town administrator, uh, Mollin, would like me to bring to your attention that there is a recommendation um that all psychemen and board members, I think, that's, okay, all town board, uh, all boards on the town. Including ZVA, receive a two percent increase for FY twenty four. As chairman, would you have any issue if the zoning board uh depart depart departmental request is updated accordingly? If you are okay with this, I can then place an item on the menu and inform otherwise town administrator, it will be a special meeting called null later Tuesday of next week. Um, so do we have any kind of justification as to the increase?
So it was an increase that was made by uh the board of selectmen on the recommendation of the town administrator and FinCom. So FinCom was uh giving everyone, because they recognize um that pretty much not many boards and committees have received any increases in significant amount of time.
Doesn't, so they made a flat kind of thing.
They made a flat increase for all the boards and committees.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that's across the board, even for the commission of disability, same thing.
Uh, is there any discussion that, or any, not like, any comments anyone has?
Well, we uh, we actually have a kickback two years ago. So it's pretty much going us back to where we were.
Right.
So, I'm okay with it.
Okay, so you want me to vote to approve?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, a couple pieces of public input I have, so one, um, Nancy Goulart asked me if I was aware of any kind of bylaw the town has regarding. Law on signs on town property in terms of advertising. Because she has seen, and I commented that I also have seen stunder rule, uh, mosquito spraying, not, 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 not notifying the town. State spray, that's why, I mean, like, you know, I'm Joe Cho's mosquito spread, I'll bump your house and spray, that's what I'm talking about. And she said, if I was aware of any kind of bylaws that were prohibited this, because it it's an eyesaw and. Exactly, so the, so on people's properties, that's different story. There are temporary signs, so campaign signs, township signs have a temporary. I don't have some license, but they're allowed temporarily, I'm not sure what the exact ranges, that's not relevant, but my question to, I guess, you guys and Carrie is. Where, what role, if at all, does the zoning board have in those signs on like town property? If if, again, I'm not, I'm not saying we should, I'm not saying we should be, it is within our purview. I just, it's more point of information than my, uh, Nancy Goulart asking, that's a good point, I can look into it. Do do, because like, I don't, you know what I'm talking about, right? Like, you click on a. Passion grass between an intersection, that's clearly not someone's property, it's town property.
Right.
Those can't be there, they're not, they're not temporary, they're. Okay, i- is there any kind of bylaw saying those are allowed? I would assume no.
Um, so we do have a sign bylaw.
And I'm not talking about businesses, I'm talking, like, I'm not talking like, you know.
And you're not talking political, you're talking about like business.
Right, so like, I, I, I have a arts and crafts business that I have. Oh, a passion grass that looks like it's just a twenty two years, I would put a sign there to advertise. So not on my, not on my property, not a sign on my property, not a sign on Carrie's property, on town property. I would assume no, those clearly aren't temporary, those are clearly. Because she is right, they are popping up a lot, and I.
Close the end of that.
Sorry. Well, that's fine, that, you guys know, you're kind of along on a furniture, right?
Yeah.
I think. Uh, our town property is not for them to foster their assets. There's Facebook, there's your own property. You don't get to this, I mean, like, again, I'm a landscaper and I do business for you, and you are willing to put your sign, my sign, your property. That's a completely different story, and I'm talking about that.
Those types of signs have been around forever, they've been around.
Oh, no, oh, I know that, but it is, but not until Nancy men- and I, Nancy mentioned like, I don't, I wouldn't sit there so far anywhere, but.
So I went to an intersection, it's a street, no part of the sign.
You can't, you can't, it's temporary.
It was that part of the sign to overhang it with a public weight and one inch.
But again, it's temporary, and you have to take them down after, whether you win, lose, you have to take them down. And I, and I think from what I understand, it was kind of like seeing it, it does, you know, it's.
To have a sign.
No, not, well, not town property, I just, I phrased that wrong, not like town hall lawn, but like a passion grass on forty four. That like is above a bunch of woods that like, I don't know, I'm just gonna put it there.
Like at the end of a road.
Yeah, I've seen.
I'm trying to think of an exact example, I mean, I know I've seen. If we, if we have to forward this to Jim to see if we can get his input, that that's fine, it's more just, I'm more asking, I mean, we do a law.
There is a sign bylaw of section thirty three hundred, if you want to take a look at it, it does have provisions about the location that signs can be in. It talks about the fact that a sign can't be erected or or enlarged or structurally altered without a sign permit from the building commissioner. There's provisions in there for temporary signs, and then you can look at the definition of sign, which is on page eighty five of the bylaw. Which does say that certain things are not considered signs, such as temporary devices erected for a charitable or religious cause, provided they're removed within seven days of erection.
Yeah.
Um, legal notices or informational devices erected or required by public agencies. Um, flag or insignia of any government except when displayed in connection with commercial promotion.
So the thing about this, like, I.
I don't know that you necessarily have these, I mean, I think yard signs, yard sales are are considered temporary, um.
Because this is definitive end date, if my yard sale is tomorrow, you know, that's.
Well, yes, and I mean, real estate signs, you know, are not, are temporary signs.
Is there a distinction, Margaret, whether the nonprofit making enterprise versus nonprofit? So business versus, for example, the lines.
Well, yeah, religious or charitable entity. Well, yeah, a religious or charitable entity would be an exact, they don't meet the definition of sign. And then you could have political signs, they don't require a sign permit. Construction signs don't require a sign permit if they're removed within thirty days, I mean, there's, so there's provisions about certain types, but. I don't know that every type of sign, the commercial signs that you're seeing, I don't know if they necessarily comply or not. I think the building commissioner, whose job it is to enforce the zoning bylaw, would be the person to ask. And if we see people that have it for too long, then maybe there might be a letter that needs to go to them, or you may think about amending the bylaw.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's become commonplace to have graduation signs, lawn signs. But they probably don't fall within your bylaw right now. So, you know, I just, I think that when you get into this type of a conversation, your bylaw and signs probably hasn't been looked at or amended in many, many years.
Many years.
I'll go mention that to Nancy Goulart, um, the last piece of public input that I personally had was, and I, I wasn't here for that part of this discussion with the, um. Ground, like, that preschool, but the point that I was trying to make was, do you see how prepared they were? They, they kind of mentioned that, that they had a sign, they had it, both parties went, when you compare that. To the correspondence from Paul Fines. Do you, do you see what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
And that's what I think this frustrated me so much, that these two homeowners didn't have a term, didn't have an engineer, didn't have a representative. On their own, being pretty novice to this whole process.
Right.
When you look at their preparedness, with the Paul Fines. And I wasn't trying to, I hope it wasn't, I was trying to show, fair enough, or biased towards one, but I think that it's, it's a relevant thing to consider with. Why I was so frustrated with the lack of correspondence from Paul's team, why I was less willing to give them chances.
Right.
I mean. The people before us with the preschool, that is what we're here for. That's what the zoning board is, is to help them not to facilitate Paul's negotiations with his sale.
Right.
So I, that's, I just wanted to know for the record, but that's.
No, I agree.
Why I was so passionate about both of their approaches.
Why not the sounding board for the neighbors' complaints of thirteen years.
And also not how, maybe there are, maybe the whole word is a hundred percent right about the work of, of the, of the insulation. But if we open up that can, that's the can of worms that I was trying to not open was, oh, my railings are crooked.
Well, right.
Now, we're, well, you heard them about insulation, well, that's taken up with the.
Exactly.
Not with us, but, but, anyway, anyone else have anything? No?
No.
Marjorie, Carrie, anything?
Nope. Mr. Mullins needs to, or Mr. Phillips needs to sign the Mullins affidavit.
Yeah.
For both matters.
Right.
For both matters, yes.
All right, um, I assume there's a correspondence, right?
No.
Okay, um, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May twenty-fifth and May twenty-sixth?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, May twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Second, any discussion, all in favor? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for being, I mean, well said. Thanks for the implications regarding the recess, that I, for, case, the meeting, what to do next, I was literally coming up the exit, if I go.
Sorry.
So, I was like, I should, I, I didn't notice, no, I was like, I'm just gonna shut up. I, it was hard for me, I was, it was me.